My Jesus Christ was born by men, by men in blasphemy. Father, forgive their sins, the sin, he prayed for them for thee. Why, love divine, oh, precious grace, that God should die for man, with joyful grief I lift my praise, abhorring all my sins, adoring all the earth.
Amen.
This is God's musical talent, musical talent, isn't it? You know what? He's got it that turns that talent into praise as well.
It's kind of like stuff like that. Could you have it going in prayer? You're singing a couple of songs then with the announcements that I guess the last night, new friends with the journey.
Dear holy people, we love together, God together for you this morning. I pray that we can just worship you for who you are. And we'll thank you for your mercy, for your grace. And we'll just thank you how good you are for sending your son to die for us. And yeah, just pray that we worship you this morning. May you be exalted, may you be glorified.
Hallelujah.
For the preaching we're going to hear this morning, we have all these things in Christ's name.
Amen.
Let's all take your new books, turn to hymn number four hundred and fifty-five, four hundred and fifty-five.
My heart was sore when Jesus gave me, and the sin from hell I've found. There never was a sweeter melody, it's the melody of love. In my heart there rings a melody, there rings a melody with heaven's harmony. In my heart there rings a melody, there rings a melody of love. A love that cries to night on Calvary, for he washed my sins away. He but within my heart a melody, and I know it's there to stay. In my heart there rings a melody, there rings a melody with heaven's harmony. In my heart there rings a melody, there rings a melody of love. For thee my vengeance gleaming glory, with the angels I will sing. For thee is sung a glorious harmony, when the chords of heaven ring. In my heart there rings a melody, there rings a melody with heaven's harmony. In my heart there rings a melody, there rings a melody of love.
Hymn number four hundred and fifty-eight, four hundred and fifty-eight.
Ring the bells of heaven, there is joy today, for a soul returning from the bond. See the Father meets him out along the way, welcoming the weary walking child. Glory, glory, how the angels sing, glory, glory, how the heart's hearts ring. 'Tis a ransom army like the mighty sea, healing forth the end of the sinners. Ring the bells of heaven, there is joy today, for the wanderers' wonders reconciled. Yes, a soul of rest is from his sinful way, and is born anew to ransom child. Glory, glory, how the angels sing, glory, glory, how the love's hearts ring. 'Tis a ransom army like the mighty sea, healing forth the end of the sinners. Ring the bells of heaven, spread the peace today, angels swell the clouds with their strength. Tell the joy of tidings buried far away, for the precious soul is born again. Glory, glory, how the angels sing, glory, glory, how the love's hearts ring. 'Tis a ransom army like the mighty sea, healing forth the end of the sinners.
Amen.
Here we see it. This is who walked in today. We've had good meetings already, Friday night, last night, and now today. And the singing is wonderful, and really congregation singing is wonderful. It fills my soul. Each and every one of you is just a special guest for us today. And even if you come all the time, you just could see all day together. And you'll see some new friends out here as well. Not too many announcements today. Now, remember, we don't pass an offering up. If you'd like to contribute your love offering, there's a box back there, and you can do so. But that's as much solicitation as I'll get. We just, we just know that God provides our needs. That's what we're excited about. But we're glad to have each one of you here today. A couple of things in your bulletin, notice this now. You know, having met Pastor Brown already from Delante, Florida. We're going to have a couple more congregational hymns, and then the passage northwest will come up. We really enjoyed having them here as well.
Amen.
Some sweet testimonies from those young people. But then, I don't like to break the singing down to introduce Brother David. He's going to come preach to us after that. And so, that's what's going to happen in the immediate future. But I hope you've been praying about this. I love the Sunday School message. It is by God's Spirit.
Amen.
There are times that you just, you can hardly stand still when you know the Spirit of God is moving. And that's what we want every single time we get it. I want that in your time of devotion each day. I want that where God's Spirit is very real to you. And he's the Spirit, is the reason that we can do anything. And then, then tonight at six o'clock, we are last of these services. And I hope you can make that as well. And by the way, bring friends with you, bring friends. It is extremely important. I wrote some notes down, I'll be preaching probably next Sunday. But I wrote some notes down. Do you understand this, that we are in a kingdom, if you will, at such a time as this? We see around us a possibility of some people waking up. That doesn't hurt you, what you're saying. Because you have the answer to the means that they have. You have the answer. And not only you have the answer, you say, "Well, it's not easy for me to do that." I can tell you this, you are laboring with God, God says, if we're praying to His truth.
That's right.
You just open your mouth, God will fill it.
Amen.
God will fill it. And he can tell someone how to be saved. I heard a guy that led someone to Christ. He was convicted about not winning people to Jesus. So he went and knocked on an older guy, probably my age. He went up to a door for the first time, knocked on the door, and the guy came out and said, "I'm not interested." And he said, "But I don't recommend saying, 'Well, then just go to hell.'"
It sounds like something I'd say.
If you don't trust Christ, where are you going to go? And it wasn't my recommendation. He tried to shut the door, and the guy turned around, just sat there weeping. And the guy opened the door, and he led the guy to Christ.
Amen.
I'm not telling you that's the way to do it. There is no excuse for telling you that I don't have the ability to do that. You can do everything wrong when God's Spirit is in it. I mean, as far as the Word is concerned, and it would still work out.
Amen.
It would still work out. But I'm not trying to preach right now. But you know what? It's good to be together, and I'm so glad to see each and every one of you. Now, so that's tonight, will be the last two services for this meeting. Tuesday at fifty-five plus on the eight units, Sykes in Kalasfeld. See Tom Berlin if you have any questions about that. And I trust we'll have some more visitation on Saturday. And then, we were sure yesterday, we were going to win someone to Christ. It just seemed like they were right there in the door.
Right on the, yep.
And they didn't trust Christ, but next time they will.
Amen.
We might be just watering the seed, and someone else will come along. And they're really discouraged and down, and he'll be the one that gets to see the fruit.
Amen.
I'm happy with that too. You look at how God's moved in our midst. I don't mean to speak too long, but just remember this, we'll be here tonight at six o'clock. You come on out, bring some friends with you. Now, what's coming immediately next is two more hymns, and then the passage northwest will come, and then Brother David, okay?
Amen.
Let's all stand and give hymn number five hundred, hymn number five hundred.
When the trumpet of the Lord shall sound, the church will be on board. And the morning breaks, we turn up bright and fair. When the saints of earth shall gather over on the other shore. And the roll is called up yonder, I'll be there. When the roll, when the roll is called up yonder. When the roll, when the roll is called up yonder. When the roll is called up yonder. When the roll is called up yonder, I'll be there. On the Friday cloud this morning, when the blessed Christ has risen. And the glory of his resurrection share. When the souls of us gather in the roll beyond the sky. When the roll is called up yonder, I'll be there. When the roll, when the roll is called up yonder. When the roll, when the roll is called up yonder. When the roll is called up yonder. When the roll is called up yonder, I'll be there. When the flame foretells the master from the wondles heading south. When the song of all his wonders, love and care. And when all the black is over and the earth and drink is done. When the roll is called up yonder, I'll be there. When the roll, when the roll is called up yonder. When the roll is called up yonder. When the roll is called up yonder. When the roll is called up yonder, I'll be there.
Hymn number four hundred and seven and three, four hundred and seven and three.
Woo, love these songs this morning. Amen.
Oh, what a wonderful wonderful day, I will never forget. After I wandered in darkness away, Jesus my Savior I am. Oh, with a tender compassionate friend, he bent the knee of my heart. Shadows are spilling with joy, and telling me, "Hey, oh, the darkness is dark." Heaven came down and glory filled my soul. When at the cross the Savior made me whole. My sins were washed away, and my night was turned to day. Heaven came down and glory filled my soul. Born of the Spirit that died from above into dust and he divine. Justified fully through Calvary's law, oh, what a standing is mine. And the transactions of quick he was made, when as a sinner I came. Took the offer of grace and it properly saved me, oh, praises to him, amen. Heaven came down and glory filled my soul. When at the cross the Savior made me whole. My sins were washed away, and my night was turned to day. Heaven came down and glory filled my soul. Now I will hope that will surely endure after the passing of time. I am a sinner in heaven for sure, there are those mansions of mine. And it's because of that wonderful day, when at the cross I be clean. Revenge is eternal and blessings are eternal from heaven's verses that I receive. Heaven came down and glory filled my soul. When at the cross the Savior made me whole. My sins were washed away, and my night was turned to day. Heaven came down and glory filled my soul. Heaven came down and glory filled my soul.
Amen.
Amen, heaven came down and glory filled my soul. I am excited to be here this morning. Thank you so much that we're so thankful to be here. It has been such a blessing. Thank you Pastor Brown, and also Pastor Andrew for those good messages. And also thank you Pastor for just allowing us to give up and give our testimonies. My name is Dylan Kaufman. I am from Laney, Virginia. That's where I was born, but family was part of the military. So now I live in South Carolina. And I am a sophomore at Brown, and I am studying youth ministries. I have been so excited to be studying there, such great teachers, such great leaders that encourage us along the way, even to this point now. And it was actually during the time, last semester, when the students gave their testimonies that were here in Montana, it really encouraged me. And it wasn't something that I even really thought about, but it was something that I was like, "Lord, this is something I should actually pray about." And when they had the time for us to sign up, I went over there and signed up, even though there were so many people that actually signed up for it. I was like, "They only took this tour of our people. I don't think, you know, this is going to be it for me. I don't know if this will be." But whatever your will is, Lord, I will follow.
Amen.
And during the entire summer, I ended up working at a summer camp and just praying about it day by day. "Lord, if you want me to go Montana, please show me." And then, during the middle of that summer, I ended up getting an email saying that I got accepted to go. I was so filled with joy, and just even, I had to let my parents know about this. And they were excited for me, and encouraged me so much for it. And I've just been so encouraged being here, and really an eye-opener to what the ministry truly is.
Amen.
I'm excited for it. But as the group comes up, first to sing, just, we're so grateful to be here. And we just want to give a little message through a song before the preacher comes. Amen.
I desire to count for something new, to meet their mark when life is through. My main pursuits will come to nothing. Time will erase whatever you do. I want my life to count for Jesus. Early things will quickly pay. No need to add to worldly riches. I only seek eternal gain. With my heart and words I strive, my voice I play, it's a beautiful thing. I truly desire to build a better life, not of my own, but of the Lord's. I want my life to count for Jesus. Early things will quickly pay. No need to add to worldly riches. I only seek eternal gain. Give my life for me glorified, me glorified. Give my life for me glorified today. I want my life to count for Jesus.
Hallelujah.
Early things will quickly pay. No need to add to worldly riches. I only seek eternal gain. No need to add to worldly riches. I only seek eternal gain.
Amen.
Okay, well, before the team starts, I'm just going to give a little bit of testimony about how the Lord led me to apply for the passage northwest. My name is Bobby Plessinger. I'm a senior studying secondary education in music. And the Lord over the last year has really, he just began stirring my heart about coming to the passage. There's some testimonies of people who have been out there. In March, my grandfather unexpectedly passed away. And this was right about the time where they start making an emphasis on going to extensions and putting in applications. And so, I had to quickly leave town, and I thought I was kind of missing my real opportunity. But I returned back to class on the last day to put in your application. And the Lord had been stirring my heart about that, so I applied, got my application in just at the last second. And I was just really praying about what the Lord had happened to do. I knew that I was doing that in faith, but I didn't know what the Lord had in store for that. During that semester, we had our meeting with our academic advisors to enroll for the next semester. And I was talking with my advisor about that, and I told her that, you know, I've been praying about this, but I wasn't sure what the Lord had. And we were looking at my credits for this year, and she said, "If there was ever a time for you to go to an extension, this is it. Your schedule lines up perfectly." And I just knew that the Lord was orchestrating something, and that he had something in store for you.
Amen.
Over the summer, I was traveling a little bit. I was actually teaching at a music camp, and I was out of town again when I got the confirmation that I was accepted to go. And I immediately called my parents, and I was really excited. And then we got the news of, "Oh, you have to have a certain amount of money by this day." You know, I began to doubt what the Lord had in store, but I had that. But I was talking to my parents, and through the settling of the estate of my grandfather, my parents had gotten a check that they weren't expecting. And it wasn't a huge check, but it was enough.
Amen.
And so, the Lord allowed me to get that in, and confirmed in my heart that this is what he has. And I just want to tell you that God has met me every step of the way.
Amen.
Something that he brought to me last semester was Philippians one six, being confident of this very thing, that he which hath begun a good work in me will perform it until the day of Jesus' Christ.
Amen.
I just ask that you would pray for me as I already stepped out of faith, but that I would continue to have faith in the Lord, that he's going to meet me every step of the way.
Amen.
You.
Oh, praise the Lord. I've enjoyed these testimonies from students. Appreciate that, guys. The Bible says, "We walk by faith," and not by sight. And that just means following the Lord, where he directs you every step of the way. He usually tends to give directions one step at a time. You take that step, his grace will be right there to meet every need. And that's the life that all of us are called to live, that just shall live by faith. Take God's directions seriously. Take his instructions seriously. When he's given you something to do, step out in faith and do it knowing that he will meet your need and guide you. As we step away and hearing others testify of how God has worked in their lives, it's really an encouragement and a challenge, I believe, to all of us to follow the Lord wherever he might lead you. And whatever decision he's laid upon your heart, whatever ministry he might be calling you to, and whatever job it is that he's given you to do, your mind and your flesh should come up with all the justifications, all the excuses, all the obstacles, all the reasons why you couldn't. But if God wants you to, you can.
Amen.
And by his grace and by his spirit, I enjoyed the Sunday School sermon this morning. What a lesson, this great Sunday School sermon. Enjoyed the good music. I want my life to count for Jesus. I've been challenged being in church already today. I'm glad it's not a sin to have fun.
Amen.
I like to have fun.
Yeah.
I had a lot of fun in Montana. It's a great place.
Amen.
We had fun in the National Park. We had fun doing these long, long hikes. We had fun singing Riley Gouge Your Leg and Hop Along the Mountain, get some stitches. I mean, that's all, that all adds to the fun that you have. But listen, I had fun in church anyway. Enjoyed myself. Y'all go ahead and have fun in church, it's okay. We're Baptist, but we can have fun in church. We enjoy singing praise to God. We enjoy opening the Bible. We can, we can let our hearts be filled by the shifting with God's people. So just, just, just smoke a little bit. Relax, enjoy yourself, have fun in church, and have God glorified in that. I want him to be glorified in my life. Whether he eat or drink, and I do a lot of that, eating. I drink a lot of coffee. Whether I eat or drink, whatsoever you do, do all to the glory of God.
Amen.
We better get started with the message, second Timothy chapter two. You go all script, you go all script, you get in trouble really quickly. Second Timothy chapter number two, truth that God has laid on my heart. I am asking for his help to communicate that truth clearly and effectively this morning. Second Timothy chapter two will start in this passage. You'll leave and you'll take a detour, we'll get back to the passage at the end of the message this morning. This is a chapter that we've been working through of teenagers in our Sunday School times. I just really enjoyed it. My apologies to the young people here for a version of this message probably at least a couple of times now. It'll do you good.
Amen.
And if not, tonight, I'll And, and if not, uh, tonight, I'll be doing, you'll be okay. Second Timothy, chapter two, and verse number one. Before we get into scripture, let's go ahead and pray one more time. Let's all, let's all join our hearts in prayer and ask God for his help here. This morning, Lord, we are so thankful to be in grace that is church. God, we are so thankful for your grace. And that it's available to each and every one of us, to save us, to sanctify us, to strengthen us, to sustain us. Lord, your grace is all sufficient. And we're just thankful this morning. And God, we're all so needy this morning. God, we are dependent upon your might, your power, your grace, as we heard in a Sunday School time today. And as we approach this message, Lord, we need your help. We're asking God that you would help us not just go through the motions of a Sunday morning church service, that your spirit would fill us each one. God, I need the fullness of your Holy Spirit. I need the might and power of your Holy Spirit to preach your word, to fill all of us with your Holy Spirit today. Now that we might receive your word, that we might see ourselves in the message, God, that our hearts would be moved, that our minds would be changed, that our lives would be affected by the truth of your word. Lord, would you be glorified? Would you help us? Would you meet the need of each heart of life? God, we're asking that you will. We'll be careful to give you the praise and the honor and glory. Lord, you are so worthy. You are so deserving. In Jesus' name.
Amen.
Second Timothy, chapter two, and verse number one, look what the Bible says. Now therefore, my son, obviously, this is the Apostle Paul writing to Timothy, left in Ephesus, pastor of the word. There, but it's the Holy Spirit in spite of the letter.
Amen.
These aren't just Paul's words, these are God's words.
Right.
And they weren't just to titanicity. Every one of us this morning, God, put it in the Bible because it's profitable for doctrine, instruction, reproof, all those things, that we might be perfect and thoroughly furnished in all good works. This is the Bible for us, to us. Vow therefore, it's personal. Vow therefore, my son, be strong in the grace that is in Christ Jesus. Our churches today are plagued by a weak and pathetic Christianity.
That's right.
But God said, I want your faith to be strong.
Amen.
I want your stand to be strong. I want your labor to be strong. I want your mind and heart to be strong. Vow therefore, my son, be strong. God wants you to have a strong Christian life. God wants you to have a strong testimony and a strong witness to his saving grace. How about at this point, are you a strong Christian or a weak Christian? Well, I don't feel very strong, but it's not about my strength. The passage does not say, be strong in your personality. Be strong in your abilities. Be strong in your intellect. Be strong in your training. Be strong in the grace
Amen.
that is in Christ Jesus. And this grace is available to every one of us in the ten supply. God is able to make all grace abound towards you. They give all grace, having all sufficiency in everything. You may abound to every good work.
That's right.
Let us therefore come holy in front of grace, that we obtain mercy and light, grace to help in our time of need. The source of strength this morning is the grace of God.
Amen, that's good.
And, and no matter who you are, no matter where, what you came from, no matter what your life was before you met Jesus, no matter what obstacles or opposition that you might face, no matter what shortcomings that you think that you have, you can be a strong Christian
Yes, amen.
for the glory of God.
Amen.
And you're commanded to be. You're expected to be because God has given all of us all the grace that we need.
Yeah, amen.
Now therefore, my son, be strong in the grace that is in Christ Jesus and the things that thou hast heard of me among many witnesses. The same commit thou to faithful men, who shall be able to teach others also. Pastors may mention this a couple of times during this meeting. Our strong faith is intended to be generational.
Amen.
Mentioned in the sermon, uh, in Sunday School time this morning. We have to pass this faith on to the next generation. And not just the next generation, but those around us today, those with whom that we come in contact with. God, God wants me to keep the faith, but not to myself.
That's right.
Amen. What, what I heard, what I learned, what others have invested in me, what, what I have been entrusted with, I'm to take it, I'm to share it. Don't be a sponge that just soaks it in. You'll get sour real fast. You'll get moody real fast. You'll get gross real fast. Don't just take it in, give it out.
Amen.
Pass it on. The same commit thou to faithful men, who shall be able to teach others also. News for you this morning, not just the preacher's job.
Yeah, that's right.
Timothy, the things thou hast heard among many witnesses. Timothy was to take what he heard sitting in the pew with a group of people from the Apostle Paul. And Timothy was to take that and pass it on to somebody else.
Come on.
And that's all of us this morning, in some way, shape, or form, that's our job. To come to church, to hear the preaching, to open the Bible, to learn the word of God, so that we can teach someone else.
Amen.
So that some, when we come to church, the preacher, he studies the Bible, he prays, he prepares the message, he pours out his heart. It flows into us, but we take it into such a degree that we are then able to go and give it to someone else.
Amen.
That's the pattern here, scripturally speaking. That's what a strong Christianity looks like. Verse number three, now therefore, in your hardness, as a good soldier of Jesus Christ. And what I want you to see in the passage this morning is how all of these truths are connected. In verse one, we're told to be strong. In verse number two, the Bible says, and the things that thou hast heard of me. So and, it's a conjunction, it's a connecting word. Verse two is connected to verse number one. Why is it so important that I am a strong Christian? Because I've been given an important job to do.
Amen, that's good.
Verse number three, thou bear for, in light of the importance of the job that I've been given to do, I need to develop some backbone. I need to have some grit and determination. I need to grow some thick skin. I need to be not so weak in my Christianity that the smallest trial comes and knocks me down and gets me discouraged and I quit on God. I need to learn how to endure some hardness as a good soldier of Jesus Christ. Why? Thou bear for. What's the therefore? What's the reason that I need to be strong in your hardness because of the job I've been given in verse number two? Because I'm responsible for passing the faith on to the next generation. I'm responsible for investing others have, as others have invested in me. Don't quit. Don't let the devil get you down. Don't, don't be so easily discouraged in the Christian life by things that are minor and insignificant compared to the task that we've been given. Do you see how this truth connects together? This morning, verse number four, no man that worteth entangleth himself with the affairs of this life, that he may please him, who had chosen him to be a soldier. And that is so easy for us to do, is it not? This isn't, this isn't even talking about the sins. That's so easily the sins.
Yeah, come on.
This isn't even talking about lust of the flesh, and we have eyes that probably like it. Just life can get you all wrapped up
Yes, yes it can.
where you're so busy and you're so entangled and you're so committed to everything else that we lose focus on the task that we've all been given in verse number two. We need to make sure that our lives are free of entanglement because we have a job to do.
Yeah, that's right. That's good, preacher.
To reach others with the gospel, to teach others the truth, to have an influence on those around us and make a difference in their life.
Amen.
That's what our passage is about. Now, come to Matthew, chapter number eighteen. We'll leave Second Timothy two for a little while. We'll be back at the end of the message this morning, but come to Matthew. I said eighteen, maybe I meant chapter twenty-eight, verse eighteen, Matthew, chapter twenty-eight, and verse number eighteen. Remember the pattern in Second Timothy, Paul teaches Timothy. Timothy teaches faithful men. Those faithful men teach others also. Step by step by step. And that is exactly the pattern that was established by Jesus Christ in his final word to his followers. We call it the Great Commission. Christ's final instructions. This is the church's job. These are our marching orders. This is our reason for existence. This is the mission statement for every child of God. Matthew twenty-eight, verse number eighteen, and Jesus came in Second Timothy saying, all power is given unto me in heaven and in earth. That one verse basically takes away all of our excuses for not being a strong Christian.
Amen, that's right.
Because Jesus has all power and we have access to him.
By the hand.
In this grace, wherein we stand, we read the Bible. Verse nineteen, go ye therefore. Okay, with this in mind, based on that truth, go ye therefore and teach all nations, baptizing them in the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost, teaching them to observe all things whatsoever I have commanded to you. And lo, I am with you always, even to the end of the world. Amen. Jesus said, I'm about to leave, and when I go, I'm gonna send you my spirit. And my spirit's going to empower you to do what? To be witnesses unto me. Where? Jerusalem. Start where you are, but don't stop there.
Amen. That's right.
Jerusalem, Judea, Samaria, the uttermost part of the earth. Every sane person is responsible for spreading the gospel message.
Amen.
Not just locally, but globally.
Amen, that's right.
In Acts chapter one, when the Great Commission is recorded there, Jesus did not say, take the gospel, be witnesses to Jerusalem or Judea. He didn't say Jerusalem or Samaria. He didn't say Jerusalem or the uttermost part of here. What'd he say? Jerusalem and Judea and Samaria and the uttermost part of here. We're responsible for reaching our location, our town, our neighbors, our friends, family members, coworkers. We can't stop there.
Amen, come on.
All of us are called to be personally involved in some way, shape, or form, in reaching the world with the gospel.
Amen, yeah.
We allow our vision to become much too narrow and much too small. Well, not just for us and our family. Jesus died for the sins of the world. And there are more people alive on the face of the earth today who've heard about Coca-Cola than have heard of Jesus Christ.
Amen, come on.
Let me give you some statistics this morning. According to the Joshua Project, there are over seventy-four hundred unreached people groups in the world. Unreached, having never heard the name of, of Jesus Christ, living and dying without a gospel witness. I didn't say they don't have a church. I didn't say they don't have a Bible. I'm saying if you went and told them about Jesus, they would ask you, who? Can you imagine that? That's, that's the reality of approximately three point two, three billion people. That is more than forty percent of the world's population. And, and what did Christ call all of us to do? Go ye into all the world and preach the gospel to every creature.
Amen.
And we're all supposed to take that seriously.
That's right.
When Jesus said it, he meant it.
Amen.
And I'm gonna show you this morning that it is not an impossible task if we follow the pattern that we establish. But where it has to start is we have to embrace our responsibility. We have to realize that this is binding upon the believer today. William Carey was the founder of the modern missions movement. And where all of that began was, he was just reading his Bible and realized that Jesus meant what he said.
Yeah.
And that was not the popular belief of his day. When he began to promote this idea of missionary service, an older preacher said, sit down, young man, if God wants to convert a heathen, he'll do it without you. That was the prevailing mentality. I'm afraid that it still exists among some of our minds. But William Carey read the Bible, believed the Bible, acted on what it said, and he gave his life to spread in the gospel. Now God might call you to India like he did Carey. God might call you to the uttermost part of the earth somewhere. God might want you to reach an unreached people group. And then again, he might have a different job for you, a different place for you, a different location for you. I'm telling you, whatever that job is, whatever your career might be, whatever your plan in life that you follow, it has to somehow be attached to the Great Commission.
Amen, yeah.
It has to somehow involve reaching the world with the gospel. And the early church, they took it seriously, and they didn't just make it seriously. I'm here to tell you this morning, they got the job done.
Yeah, right.
We'll come back to Matthew twenty-eight. We're returning our Bibles this morning from Colossians, chapter one. Colossians, chapter number one. Colossians, chapter one. And there is a surprising statement that is made twice by the Holy Spirit in this chapter. Colossians, chapter one, pay attention to the words in verse number three, beginning there. The Bible says, we give thanks to God, the Father and Lord Jesus Christ, praying always for you, since we heard of your faith in Christ Jesus and of the love which you have for all the saints. And that's, that's the mark of a Christian, is it not? The love that God has given us for one another. My days have all been known of here. My days, like, well, I can go somewhere I've never been and meet people that I've never known. And instantly, we just feel like family because of how involved that we have in Jesus Christ. I'm telling you, God's people are the best people.
Amen.
They really are. And, and you need to learn to love the brethren. You can't say you love God if you don't love each other. What the Bible says.
Yes.
And the love that the believers in Colossia had, it had been noise abroad. It had made some waves. It was, it was defining feature of their faith. And we heard about it, Paul said, verse number five, for the hope which is laid up for you in heaven, talking about that last night, where have you heard before in the word of the truth of the gospel? So how does this love develop? Well, because they heard the gospel, they believed it, and the love of God was shed abroad in their hearts. Verse number six, the gospel which has come unto you. Look at this statement, as it is in all the world. Did you see what I just saw in, in the scripture this morning? When the Holy Spirit told Paul to write these words to Luke from Colossia, he said, you heard the word of the truth of the gospel, and you're not the only ones.
Yeah.
The word of the truth of the gospel has been heard in all the world. Now either he meant it or he didn't. Either it's true or it's not. I happen to believe the Bible's true.
Amen, yeah, amen.
I happen to believe that God means what he says and says what he means. And if he means what he says and says what he means, then by the time the Colossians received this letter from the Apostle Paul, all the world had heard the gospel.
Wow, amen.
Meaning they had accomplished the Great Commission.
Amen.
They had not only taken it seriously, they had carried it out.
Amen.
It was fulfilled. It didn't say all the world was saved, but every world had a chance.
Yeah.
Every creature heard the gospel. Verse number six, which has come to you, is this all the world, bring forth fruit, as it does also in you since the day he heard it, new grace and God and truth. Have not two or three witnesses, let every word be established. Let's make sure we understand this properly. Continuing the chapter, look at verse number, uh, twenty-two, in the body of his flesh through them, presents you holy and unblameable and unreprovable in his sight. And that's my only hope of holiness.
Yeah, that's right.
That's my only hope of blamelessness. That's my only hope of being ready to stand before the Lord, the righteous judge. Jesus died in my place. He shed his blood to purchase my forgiveness.
Amen.
Verse twenty-three, he continued the faith, grounded and settled, and be not moved away from the hope of the gospel. Was the gospel the good news?
Yeah.
The soul-saving message? The soul-saving message that Christ died for our sins according to the scriptures, was buried, and rose again the third day according to the scriptures, the hope of the gospel was ye have heard, I heard it.
Yes, amen.
"And which was preached to every creature which is under heaven." That's pretty clear. I don't know any other way to understand the statement than that the early church in the first century fulfilled the Great Commission. They got the job done. Without gospel tracks, the printing press didn't come about for another fourteen-hundred years, without radio, without internet, without airplanes, or trains, or vehicles, without social media, without mass media of any kind, listen, without the New Testament, it was still in the process of being written, let alone compiled and printed and published and disseminated. They accomplished the Great Commission without all of the advantages that we have in the world today. How'd they do it? They took it seriously. They had the Holy Spirit, and they had the pattern. But listen, we have all of those things. What's our problem? It's not that it doesn't work, it's not that the plan doesn't work, it's that we're not working the plan.
That's right, come on.
What's the plan, Matthew twenty-eight, we read it. Matthew twenty-eight, verse number nineteen. Matthew twenty-eight, verse nineteen, Jesus said, "Go ye therefore," guess what? Christianity's about a lot more than coming to church on Sunday. You're supposed to come to church on Sunday to encourage one another, to worship God, to learn the Bible, to fellowship, to be strengthened, but all of that is so that we can go and do something. We can't leave it in the church. "Go ye therefore," how are you involved outside of these walls in proclaiming the gospel of the world? "Go ye therefore and teach all nations." All nations, every people, these missionaries, we need more of them. These missionaries, they need more support. These missionaries, they need more prayer. There are so many nations yet unreached, who's going to reach them? It's not somebody else's job, it's our job. "Go ye therefore and teach all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Ghost, teaching them to observe all things whatsoever I have commanded you." Here's the plan, here's the program, here's the pattern, here's the method, it works, it worked in the first century, it'll work today. Preach the gospel, baptize believers, disciple them, teach them to follow Jesus Christ, and watch them do the same thing. Say, preacher, that's too simple, that's the only way to work. I wanna illustrate for you this morning, I thought about doing a slideshow that I pulled off of a YouTube video, I mean, I'm bad at this, I certainly couldn't do a video, I'm determined, and I was tempted to do a slideshow, but I figured I'd keep it simple, sometimes the devil likes to get involved in technology, but I didn't wanna give him the chance, just listen and think. Listen and think, it's tougher Americans. We prefer to stare at the screen and watch. Thank goodness morning, I gave you the option, this is a math problem, I'm sorry. If I gave you the option of a million dollars right now, and I'm not if, this is how you do it. If I gave you the option of a million dollars right now, or a penny today doubled every day for a month, which one would you take? I'm not giving you time to do the computations, take out your phone and the calculator, but I'm gonna tell you the answer, a million dollars today, or a penny today doubled every day for a month, you'd better go with a penny. Because the power of multiplication is that the end of thirty days, that what started as a penny would equal out to five million dollars. Now, most of us are all about instant gratification, and we probably couldn't wait till the end of the month for the five million, and there's a million I could have, and again, it's purely hypothetical, it's a thought experiment, follow me. Because we're applying this principle to the Great Commission. We've been saying already this week, a couple weeks ago, there were eighty thousand people in a football stadium in an arena that heard the gospel, really. And thank God for it, I didn't agree with everything, I didn't like the music, whatever, okay, but they heard the gospel. And I'm gonna rejoice that Christ was preached. And let's just say, for the sake of round numbers for the sake of example, let's say that you and I could do that, wouldn't that be cool? Imagine that you could fill a stadium of a hundred thousand people. Let's go back in the Billy Graham days in America, and let's get a football stadium filled with a hundred thousand, not to watch a game. By the way, the Lord rewarded me last night for not caring about the Alabama football team, see the score? Roll tide. They won without me even watching. And telling the coach what play he should have called, it's amazing. Let's say we had a hundred thousand people, not watch a football game, here's the gospel, wouldn't that be amazing? We'd love that opportunity. Let's say that we fill a stadium of a hundred thousand, we preach the gospel, and twenty percent of them receive the message, respond to the message, believe the gospel, call on Jesus Christ, thought experiment, hypothetical, that would be twenty thousand people saved, oh, to see the day. Let's take the next step, imagine you could do the same thing every day for a year. Now, there'd be no way to pull this off, but if you could, what would be the impact, what would be the effect? If you get a hundred thousand people at a football stadium every day for a year, and twenty percent of them believe the gospel, at the end of the year, you have seven million new believers. How long would it take to reach the world by this mass form of evangelism? Fill up a football stadium, preach in the gospel to hundreds of thousands, and twenty percent will be saved. If we go at the rate of seven million a year, how many years does it take to reach the world with the gospel if we do this every single day? It takes a thousand and ninety-five years. Longer than any of us will be alive.
But if you multiply.
And the rate of population growth is going to outpace us by far. And we will not reach the world in our generation if we could gather a hundred thousand people a day and give them the gospel. So just from a mathematical standpoint, that's not going to work. But from a mathematical standpoint, this will work. Let's do it a little differently this time.
Multiply.
Not a hundred thousand, let's start with one. Start with one. And let's give it twelve months' time, and that one person leads one more person. And not only leads that person to Christ, but teaches them the word of God, so much so that they are then able to go and reach somebody else. So the first year, you start with one, in the first year, you have two. In the second year, you have four. Following the pattern, in the third year, you count eight, in the fourth year, you count sixteen, I'm gonna run out of math real quick, in the fifth year, thirty-two, sixty-four, one-twenty-eight, I'm lost. But keep extending it out. How? Well, two fifty-six, five twelve, I had it in my notes. If we could start with one, and every one reached one every year, how long would it take to reach the world with the gospel? If we start at a football stadium, it's a thousand years. But if we start with one and follow this method, thirty-four years. And the whole world would have the chance to hear the gospel, believe in Jesus Christ. And we started with one. Let's change that for just a moment, for the sake of thought. Because the concern of estimate is there are at least ten thousand independent Baptist churches in the United States of America. So let's just say one person in each of those churches follows this, let's start with ten thousand instead of one, how quickly could we reach the world? The number comes from thirty-four years down to twenty years. Is that not amazing? Why did God set it up the way he did? Because it's the only way to work. Why doesn't it work? Why doesn't it work?
Not everybody does it.
That's what I wanna see from the scripture this morning, the point of the illustration is just to show that as possible as it was in the first century, it's still possible today. It all starts with at least accepting that by faith. Walking by faith, believing that what God has given us to do is something that is not in the realm of impossibility. All things are possible. If we convince ourselves it can't be done, we're gonna have to take the first step and say, "God." But if our hearts, we can believe that the world can be reached, then maybe we can find some motivation to do our part. I'm not gonna run all the references this morning, but this is interesting how it's traced throughout the book of Acts. In Acts chapter five, verse fourteen, as well as in Acts chapter two, verses forty-one and forty-seven, the gospel's preached, and believers were added to the church. But you keep going, and by the time you get to Acts six and Acts nine and Acts twelve, the Bible says the number of the saints was multiple. You go a lot farther, a lot faster with multiplication than addition, and that's the biblical method. The biblical method is preaching the gospel and discipling believers, and teaching those who are reached to teach, those who are reached to teach, those who are reached, we make disciple-making converts. That's in 2nd chapter two, the back door passage. Because what Christ said in Matthew twenty-eight is mirrored in 2 Timothy, chapter two, but the passage also clues us in as to where this all breaks down. 2 Timothy, chapter two, verse number two. "And the things that thou hast heard of me among many witnesses, the same commit thou to faithful men, who shall be able to teach others also." Do you see how that matches what Jesus said? Jesus said, "Go." Teach, baptize, teach, to observe all things whatsoever I have commanded you, so He said to go, "And obey the command to make disciples, who obey the command to make disciples, who obey the command to make disciples." We go and make disciple-making disciples, that's what Paul said. Learn, learn it so well that you can teach, teach it to the faithful men so that they can teach, and just keep it going, pass it on from one generation to the next, from one life to the next, from one family to the next. And all of us have a place, all of us have a part, this isn't a call to full-time ministry, this is not a call to the pastor or the mission field, this is the call of every child of God. To invest in somebody's life, it all starts with one, I'm asking you this morning, who's your one? That you can pour into, that you can win, that you can teach, that you can disciple, that you can help, that you can invest in, so that they can go and reach somebody else, and eventually we can reach the world with the gospel message. The entire world could be reached in our generation if we would follow the pattern laid out in scripture. But why don't we? Verse number one, "Now therefore, my son, be strong in the grace that is in Christ Jesus." Why is the church falling so behind in fulfilling the Great Commission? Because fulfilling the Great Commission takes strong and committed Christians. It's not challenging, but it's more than most safe people are interested in. It's not impossible, but it does require full commitment. It does require strong faith, not weak faith. It does require a determined stand for truth and for right, and not a lackadaisical, lukewarm, watered-down, diluted form of New Testament Christianity. You've gotta be strong in God's grace in order to put this plan into motion.
Let's do it.
What I'm talking about this morning is why it is so important for you to be a strong, committed, faithful Christian, because it's the only way for God's church to fulfill the Great Commission. It's not all on the missionaries' shoulders, it's on our shoulders this morning, and it starts with you strengthening your faith. Starts with a strong faith, why does verse two not work? Because we haven't gotten past verse one. "Now therefore, my son, be strong in the grace that is in Christ Jesus." Listen, you need to build some spiritual muscle. You need to do some godly bulking up. You need to hit the spiritual gym and start working out. We need to exercise ourselves under godliness, you need to see your faith grow, grow, grow in the grace and knowledge of the Word of Jesus. Jesus Christ, don't get stagnant, don't be complacent, don't be satisfied with the weak Christianity. We've got a job to do. And it depends on us having the strength from the grace of God
That's right.
To put the plan in action. Verse number three, "Now therefore, endure hardness as a good soldier of Jesus Christ." Listen, it's simple, it's not complicated, that doesn't mean it's easy. There are going to be hard things that happen in our lives. There are going to be trials and challenges and difficulties and obstacles and afflictions and persecutions, and it's not always going to be easy to live for God, it's not always gonna be easy to proclaim the gospel and invest our lives in reaching others, but it is expected. And it is possible. But if we can't endure hardness, we're never gonna make any headway on fulfilling the Great Commission. What the measure of a man, I think it was Bob Jones Senior, the measure of man is what it takes for him to quit. How much does the devil have to throw your way to get you out of the race? How big does the trial have to be to get you to lay down your weapons, step out of the fight? For so many believers in our churches today, it sure doesn't take much. All it takes is a late night on Saturday night to keep them out of church on Sunday, how are we gonna reach the world with the gospel? We need to get over, we need to get past the sad little conflicts, the puny little trials. Listen, I'm not trying to make light of what's going on in your life, but I'm telling you, the grace of God will lay you over and it makes you a victorious Christian, it will reach somebody else with the gospel message. Be strong in the grace, endure hardness, many Christians never get past that, that's why they can't get it in verse number two, because they're not strong, and because it doesn't take anything to get them out. Verse number four, "Be not entangled in affairs this life, that you can please him with the chosen him, to be a soldier." Now, listen, we all have duties, obligations, responsibilities, God commanded you to provide for your family. You know what that means? You gotta go to work. You gotta make some money. You gotta pay the bills. Might as well do it as well as you can, might as well be as comfortable as possible, might as well work hard enough to make enough to have something to give, that's all biblical. But you can't get wrapped up in it. You can't serve God in mammoth. And there are so many things like that that are snares to the Christian, that will entangle our lives and make us unable to give our lives to that which we're supposed to give our lives, and that is hearing among many witnesses, teaching faithful men. There's one other thing I want you to see in the passage, I'm gonna try to break short, it's hard. "Endure hardness as a good soldier of Jesus Christ." That verse applies in churches, sometimes the preacher just goes too long, it's okay. In verse number two, In verse number two. "The things that thou hast heard of me, among many witnesses." The same commit thou, faithful men, you should be with yourselves also, so Timothy was responsible for, for passing on the truth. For passing down the truth, for training others who could train others, but where did Timothy get that training down? It wasn't in a one-on-one discipleship setting.
Many witnesses.
Did you see it? "The things that thou hast heard of me, among many witnesses," you know what it sounds like? It sounds like church.
Come on.
It sounds like believers gathered together to hear the teaching of the Word of God. Timothy was supposed to be able to sit in the pew under Paul and learn enough to be able to go and teach somebody else.
Come on, that's right.
And I'm not against one-on-one discipleship, I'm for it. I'm not against a small group setting, I'm for it, I'm not against the midweek Bible study, I'm for it, I'm not against the men's prayer breakfast, I'm for it. But what I'm saying is that every time we come to church, it's discipleship. Every time we come to church, it's the purpose of us learning enough to be able to go and teach somebody else. That's why we need to take this seriously, amen, this kind is so sacred and so important, and that's why we need to come with our Bibles open, and our hearts ready, and our minds willing to receive the truth. Listen, what excuse do we have?
None.
For not being able to win a soul of Christ and train them in a Christian life? You're a good church. You're a Bible-teaching church. You're in a Bible-preaching church, how long is it supposed to take for you to learn enough to be able to put this plan into action? Pastor Andy and I were talking last night, um, and, and, and this is something you hear oftentimes again, I'm not being overly critical, I, I, I just want to be a little bit critical, make you think. You know what our, our, our high school young people are encouraged to do? Oftentimes, again, listen, don't, don't be offended when I say this, but they're, they're encouraged, you need to take one year and go to Bible college. I'm not against going to Bible college, I'm not against going to Bible college for a year, I'm not against that first year after high school to be this time, but the, the reasoning is often phrased this way, you need to go to Bible college for a year after high school so you can figure out what you believe.
Come on preacher.
And I do take issue with that a little bit. Because what were you doing the past eighteen years? What was Sunday School all about? What was junior church all about? What was Sunday morning all about? What was Sunday night all about? Midweek service all about? If it wasn't about learning what you're supposed to believe and putting it in practice?
Come on.
How long you been saved? How long you been in a Bible, preaching, teaching, church, how much have you learned? Again, Christianity is more than just showing up for a church service one day a week. It includes that church service one day a week, and that's the important time, because that's where we learn to be able to teach others also.
Amen.
My challenge to you this morning is, do you know enough about the Christian life to teach somebody else that way?
Yep. Do it all the time.
Are you living a strong enough Christian life to show somebody else how to live it? Because that's the only way the Great Commission will ever be fulfilled. But it's something that all of us can be involved in. If we walk by faith. If we'll believe it can be done. If we'll embrace the responsibility. If we'll see the importance, if we'll develop a burden for lost souls. We'll be strong, we'll be faithful, we'll endure hardness, we'll stay unentangled, but that's all necessary so that we can put the plan into action. And reach the world with the gospel, aren't you glad somebody reached you?
Amen.
Aren't you glad somebody told you? Aren't you glad somebody taught you?
Yes.
Lord, thank you for your worthy spirit, God, I pray for truthfulness, fire, and channeling, Lord, I need continually of the importance of this. Now that you were here in our hearts, help us, Lord, to be hearers, and help us to be doers. Heal us some strong Christians. Grace Baptist Church, Lord, we pray for your blessing, on invitation time, we love you, and we sincerely, amen.
The greatest day anyone, if you raise your hand, the greatest day of your life was day you were saved. Of those hands that are up, how many of you shared that with someone else? That's what's important, isn't it? I mean, yeah, it's great for sake. But I think the biggest reason we don't share that with someone else is because too often, our faith doesn't meet our expectations. I'm glad I'm safe, I'm, I'm safe on my way home, and you let it go there. Hey, I'm going to heaven, I'm glad for that. But I'll tell you what, you have a, a family, you want your kids to go to heaven, what's the difference? I mean, there's a difference, but I want my kids to go to heaven, my grandkids to go to heaven, well, everyone you see is someone else's kid.
Yep.
And we need to have that bird. Four hundred twenty-nine, that stands the same. You need to do some business with the altar, you need to look at it. Four hundred twenty-nine. You know, it's just one person that's saved because of an altar that was full. What happens if ten people got witnessed to this week just because altar was full? I mean, ten people preached one, how hard can I handle that? We are real anxious for someone to witness to our altar once. Why wouldn't we witness to someone else's altar?
That's right.
And I can tell you this, you see that one gets saved? Tears flowing down their face, they don't always, but I've seen Marines with tears flowing down their face, saying, man, if I died five minutes ago, I would go to hell. Not what I have. If you've never experienced that, well, if you did the Bible, it's a real blessing, you should be glad to have each of you. Listen, we're gonna have a great time tonight, and I'm sorry that it ends, but at the same time, we need to out there and do. I was gonna say this morning, when we sang Old Before. The finest man I've ever met was Pastor Andy, who's been here many times, he was the Lord right now, he wouldn't sing this song. He's a Marine, he said, I'm a old mini four, I'm attacking. By the way, in his retirement, he led people to go to every single sure good to have each one of you here today, I'm thankful for that.
By the way, thank you for the message this morning, it's been a work of it. How your word stirs us and convinces us, that's why we're the prayers, it'll take the message this morning, and it continues to stir our heart. We have a burden for those who bow to us, Lord, just even if it passes on a gospel track one day, we pray, Lord, and just continue to work in our hearts, to leave this place, bring us back, take it to your time, and pray Jesus next.
All right, y'all, we'll be back again tonight at six PM Montana time, and that's all we're doing.